Tired to establish closer relationships with the school district because of what they're doing in this industry. In hopes of, you know, employ young people from our community who will stay in the community, work in the community. So they've been their commitment to us and and we're responding responding to it across the river. That was a possibility. This area in here looks kind of weird. This will be basically what we've learned from PGAV is is that, you know, the outfall stores that are here and the pumping station that is here. They're still, you know, a part of the tip, but they don't have to be within the boundary itself. That's something else we learn. We also learned that as a part of increment that's generated in here. And we have yet to speak to the school district, but some of the increment generated here can actually go towards the technology programs that they're trying to do with the school district. So all of those high end labs that they've created, best way to describe it, to educate the younger generation now. Some of the increment can actually go there and be complimentary. So, no, excuse me. No, no. So so this has got to the starting point, but this is just a small part. This is not the core, like some are the core. You know, then we get beyond that question of the factory of fear is past that in this area. Oh, there you go again. All right. So then we get into the other discussion along the corridor and obviously there's a lot of residential at both sides of the highway. Obviously more to the to the south going up to the bluff and then up the bluff actually. And then there's some vacant properties. Sitting vacant and vacant for some time. Some of them were used as car lots, some of them are no longer used as car lots. There's a smattering of different, you know, I guess, small commercial purposes there. You know, convenience store, liquor stores, private clubs like the Bouldering Club. So there's, there's just a number of different types of businesses and industry along the corridor. And we never envisioned as a staff, we never envisioned going back into neighborhoods and disrupting life. It's not, that's not at all what the goal is. I think the goal is to work with the DOT. Cause the highway improvements that they're working on. It's to some of you. Seems a lot longer than that maybe. But working on how to make improvements along the I dot corridor. David Dreyer has been in regular communication with I dots. So we have a pretty good idea at this point, you know, what they're talking about doing in this area through here initially, starting with the roundabout between the two cities. Production of the lanes, you know, where to place the multimodal facility, basically the bike trail. You know, does it remain here and have conflict with traffic or does it move here to Fifth Avenue? There's a lot of moving parts in the discussion and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to bring this forward at the beginning of the year. You know, and then beyond this, obviously, I mean, there's still some properties. I know that there was a question, you can't see it here. You see it there. That really, but there was a question about the triangular property that was a lay down zone. You know, and at one point we put it in as a staff and then we took it out based on discussions with Mike Meyer. Terms of it's right here, basically right in through here like this. So.
You mean that Mr. Vitas, you mean Mike Weber?
Weber, did I say Mike? Sorry. Well, Mike did bring it up. I mean, Mike went, you're right, Mayor. Mike went, did bring it up. We see that.
Mike, which Mike are you talking about?
Weber took it out, went, wanted it in.
I know.
Yeah, yeah. And MW, too many MWs. I think there's three of them.
I'd say.
There's the innocent, the innocent is interesting. So I mean, we'll go back and revisit that. I don't want anybody to think that that's out. I mean, that obviously, you know, has the potential to be great residential.
Yeah.
Development.
It's like the best.
Part of it.
Yeah, it's, it's really an interesting piece and it might be part of the overall analysis. There's two very successful condominium projects that are already standing and they turn over like this. I mean, they are really, really great pieces of investment property or homeownership property. So we're gonna kind of go through this a little bit. We want to kind of.
Mr. Vitas, we have Adam McLeever.
Okay, Adam.
Bob, can you, can you hear me all right?
I hear you. We all hear you, Adam.
Okay, thanks. I was just making sure I understood what you're saying. Is that triangle fortune closer to the river across the track? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
For the residential, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
I think it's an isosceles triangle based on its shape.
Ooh, right, there we go. I was probably.
Thinking back on my education. A long time ago, but I think that's what it is. So. So anyhow, we want to get into that discussion because what we do here is going to have a ripple effect, right? And then on the far end, when you go to the other end and you come all the way back over here. Obviously, this is the new bridge here. You know, it's an old map, but that's the new bridge. We get into a discussion about this neighborhood, right? And it's kind of transitioning. You know, but it's part of that corridor. And and it's part of the master planning that that Ryan is going to go through with Renew Moline. As we start to master plan and vision, what should happen there? It's meant a lot of ideas, but not a lot of attention paid. And now that it's isolated in some respects, you know, from from the rest of the old downtown. It becomes part of the new downtown on either side of the bridge. So there is an interest here and we are always trying to divert people's attention there for investments. Because it certainly will lend itself to that. It's ideal for that. So we'll be looking at that as an alternative. The state down the road has talked about moving this road out of the park and realigning it in through here. That would abandon that road. That changed the whole character of the park. That's why Eric is here. No question that that should change. It does impact our park tremendously. So we're going to want to work with I dot on that as well to see if we can make that realignment happen where the old firehouse is at. I believe that's that right there. So those are some of the key things that have happened, at least in a year and a half I've been here, at least the discussions that have been going on. You know, and and we know that along the corridor, I mean, we've got road conditions, road conditions issues, we've got stormwater issues. We have to deal with, you know, we've got vacant lots or properties that need to be dealt with. We have some blighted properties that need to be, something needs to happen to them. And I think as we start to invest in the corridor, you'll see other people investing alongside us. And that's really what it is, but it always takes the city to jump in. You know, if we show the interest, people will come and they know it's rest their interest. All of it's.
I, I don't know if this is out of current or. But this neighborhood between the two, between the four, very familiar with it. It's very, it's in isolation. Because of the road and the railroad tracks and things like that. It is my opinion that the easiest way, I, I think a tip there would be great. There's a whole business section, as you see in the zoning. If there were a pedestrian bridge over the train track to the university campus or that area.
Somewhere in.
Yeah, uh, at the end of twenty fifth street. That would completely open up that neighborhood to a whole different group of people.
Yep, that's twenty fifth.
Yep, it would. And I don't know how easy that is, but a tip could probably help with that kind of project. And then that makes it easier to be student housing or just accessible to a different demographic of people.
What a great suggestion. Have not heard that suggestion before today.
And then.
So we should write it down.
Bikes go over that too, on the Pet Ridge. So trains aren't as big of an issue.
Right, if trains aren't going, let's face it, we're not going to get, you know, hopefully not the train traffic you're going to see on the Iowa side of the river. With that merger, but we're still going to have train traffic. It's not going to go away and, you know, it's not like we're going to add significant amount of Amtrak traffic one day and that's going to be limited in terms of its impact as it comes in the morning and goes out in the evening, vice versa. So it'll be there, but it's not like the rail traffic, all of the tanker cars that move through our city. You know, uh, that's what you see a lot of tankers, a lot of that move through here. So, so that's, that's one of the issues. The university, we've had discussions with them. You know, they've talked about housing issues, you know, trying to become more than just a commuter school campus, but more of a place where they could actually settle in and have students living off campus. You know, so they've looked here, they've looked in this area. I, I know that, had those discussions. They've also looked at other areas. I mean, we don't know, for example, what will happen one day with with Midland property. You know, this, the whole, the whole fabric is changing. So we have to be mindful of that. That can tell you they want to meet, they want to talk. You know, so, so there's, there's movement afoot to try and, you know, see the landscape change a little bit. And we got a great team of people who worked on it. You know, they bring some great expertise from different cities, whether it's Madison, Wisconsin, or Kansas City area, or, you know. Ryan, you've been everywhere as well. So, so there's a lot of different people and there's a lot of people who've been here and rooted here for a long time. It's their own count. So I think we got the right team to work on all of this and, you know, with that, I mean, I don't want to be the only one talking tonight. That's not the purpose. Purpose is to just kind of lay out some of the things that have been going on. Uh, some of the plans that have been done and paid for. And then analyzing, you know, where we're going to go. I know there's discussions about the East End Park, which is way over here. And this piece of property, which is pretty much vacant now and that possibly being a parking lot that we acquired that would service this park because there's going to be investment in that park. So a lot of moving pieces and a lot of opportunities for Moline to redevelop. Not just this, which is, you know, the focus of a lot of attention, a lot of future investment. But how to get to this is just as important as this. You can get to it from just seventy four. You can get to it of the east. And the east gate needs to actually now take some life out of the zone. So that's why we're focusing some attention here. You as a council have included in the strategic plan as one of our goals. So that's what we're going to do. Along with all the housing issues we have to deal with. But this will be a focus going forward. With that, Ryan, you want to add anything that I may have missed or you've been there?
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, one of the goals tonight is, is to get a little bit of direction from this council on what areas do we want to study in conjunction with PGAV? They're going to need to have some boots in the ground here in the next couple of weeks to do what they need to do with the redevelopment plan. And so we want to give them some good direction on that. You know, one of the things, like I said, that, you know, we learned through this process is that, you know, if there's a nexus to the TIF area. Probably doesn't necessarily have to be within the TIF. So, you know, this might be a question for Adam. We have a park that's just outside the TIF boundaries where there could be some additional work to be done or some property acquisition. If it's serving folks in that neighborhood, can you make a, can you make an argument to reimburse some of those expenses to the TIF? Or should we include that within the the boundary itself?
I think you can do it either way. Of course, you have more flexibility if it is included in the TIF boundary itself. By the way, you can make capital improvement to it and you don't have to worry about drawing the nexus between the number of residents within the TIF boundary and their activity in the park. You don't have to mess around with any of that. That goes for stormwater or any other, any other fixes that you want to do outside the boundary. Get to draw that connection between what's going on inside and what's going on outside. I would say if you've got some definite expenses in that part. I think if it's convenient, it's a good idea to include it.
Mr. Brian.
I think the part that you referring to is actually along the I ninety two corridor, correct? That's a parking lot.
That's a parcel, yeah, yeah.
That we need that. Yeah. The, the, the caveat with one of the reasons why we had kind of shrunk this boundary down a little bit was we're trying to be cautious and stay below seventy five homes within there because if you do that, you open up some additional notice requirements, meeting requirements. You have to bring somebody from that neighborhood into the joint review board. So there's, there's some additional procedural requirements that can slow down the process. And as Bob mentioned, one of the major reasons for this tip is to facilitate par instruments, redevelopment plans. Now, that's not to say that they're driving the ship here. I mean, you know, we, we want to work with them, but at the same time, we want to make sure we're doing this right. And getting the boundaries where, where we think they need to be. So, you know, that, that shouldn't be an absolute, you know, we can't go over seventy five, but just know that if you do, there's going to be some additional studies.
Mr. Williams? My God, Mr. Williams, can I have a turn?
Um, I, I want to talk about the isosceles triangles just for a second. I, I know that one of the reasons the capping table didn't go up is because the footings had to go so far and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that included them from doing what they originally wanted to do possibly. So that, that triangle, you know, was included in the TIF, they, you know, they may need that to possibly help them, but it seems with all the development, it's abandoned. To piggyback off of that, you know, they have, you know, really tall, you know, it, it just would make sense, but I don't know if it's possible there. But, you know, seeing that it's that is a possibility, that makes a lot of sense.
Mr. Brian.
Yeah, well, that, oh. That triangle is literally the lowest point for flooding. That is the first spot, that catch basin on the triangle across the street and River Drive. It's literally the first catch basin that floods in Mississippi.
But are we doing remediation there? I mean, that's the plan.
And I'm sure if it catches that part up there, the remediation is catching what's coming down the hill to that pumping station over the tracks out to the river. That triangle was always kind of set by itself since it's on the other side of the new River Drive.
I, I just had a question for Ryan. On the IT, the technology corridor discussion, who is being brought into that? Is that beer and company too? I know there's somebody in Renew, Renew always has somebody from beer and company.
Yeah.
There's somebody from there. I think the school board, since school boards, Eric can answer this one too. They're not happy with usually with TIFs happening anywhere.
True.
But, you know, that might be something to include them in on it too. There's going to be something, I know Western Illinois University, their mechanical engineering program is phenomenal. I mean, I, they place everybody right out of shoot with, you know. So that I, I really was excited when I saw that was in plan, the IT corner.
Um, I'd like to take you back on what Mr. Williams said and thank you, Mr. Waldrich, for noting the flood area or flood issues in that triangle. I do agree that capitalizing as we can, as is reasonable with our dollars on what is happening at the bend is important that, that, and we have been spending so much time talking about housing and will continue, that's going to increase as we move forward in this year. That pursuing options for that in a prime piece of real estate, that if you think about the location and the beauty there. I think it's really important. I will say, given, you know, questions I've been asked about tip seven. I don't want to see us create a tip that has only one project in it for many years, right? If we know par is on board, et cetera. But we need to be very, very smart about these boundaries and very, very smart about where projects or potential projects are at. So that we don't create the kind of issue that we've had in tip seven where there's nothing happening and it's impacting many, many taxing bodies. So. Uh, I see Mr. Schmidt's hand.
So part, I, I have a question that's a little on the the general side, but it's speaking very much to what we have here and it's kind of about like how big we want to draw that tip. Or are we thinking about drawing multiple tips in the long term? Because I recognize that we want it to be big enough so that you catch that one project, but then it is we're able to reap that benefit in that larger neighborhood area. And, but also that if we were to cover like the whole of the area, we wouldn't be able to go find that next anchor project and kind of pull it down. So as I look, I just am wondering how we find what is that right size? And I, I have heard the arguments on both sides. I have honestly not come to a final conclusion of like what I think is exactly right, except that I think some kind of balance is probably right. But I'm hoping we can talk a little bit about how we use that formula or what our staff or the consultants have for that.
Adam, you want to weigh in on that a little? Basically, your experience, they want.
So this, the, the boundary that we've had in our name of science, that's really a combination of what can qualify and where the opportunities are, what projects you want to complete. So an area might qualify, but there might not be any opportunity. And then the other, the opposite might be true too. So what we're talking about here is par is certainly an opportunity. So you can sort of sort of build it out from there. Fourth Street has some problem properties, certainly some opportunities. The eastern gate of the city certainly is an opportunity and the stormwater project is another one and that is the reason to include that. The triangle, again, I kind of want to second what the mayor said and earlier a comment about if there's a real opportunity there, then, you know, it would qualify. It appears to qualify just from an aerial image that I'm looking at here. I don't think there's anything in this area that's really in excess. You know, you don't go too far into the neighborhood from, from what Ryan your original boundary that you were starting to think about. It doesn't look like it goes too far into the neighborhood. So I think it's, it's a pretty good size right now. And like I said earlier, if it's convenient and it's reasonable and there's projects that are sort of budding off of that original boundary. Then you can consider the possibility of expanding it.
Mr. Vitas, I, I need to see the big group. I can't see all.
I'm here.
Yes, but Mr. Vitas and Mr. Meatloaf. Would it be Renew Moline that would lead up the charge on any interest in, in housing development in that triangle? That, that, does their purview go all the way over?
Yeah, the, the, surprisingly, the boundaries under the purview of Renew Moline literally take this entire area into consideration. I mean, the focus has always been just west of the old I seventy four corridor in downtown because that was obviously the heart of the, the heart of the city there. But their purview does go from river to bluff, from border to border, literally. I mean, it's, it's a large area and they would play an integral part in discussions with the city in terms of trying to induce or attract development. As kind of an economic development arm of the city, but independent.
Thank you.
Similar, similar to the way we've been working with JCP, but I have a question. And I want to go back.
And I'd like to ask Bob or Mr. Ryan to weigh in on my question.
About the.
On how we should draw the boundary and kind of what, what's the criteria we're using when coming up with this recommended picture?
When we drew this?
Yeah.
Well, we know for, from experience that area wide tips, you know, with a single project are very difficult to sustain. Right? I mean, they don't generate the amount of increment relative to perhaps the public level investment make the project count. So if you scale the project down, you know, and bring fewer properties in, first of all, that makes all the other taxing bodies happy. Right? They don't want to see everything going into a tip. Secondly, it scales down the public improvement element of the project. And yet you can generate a rapid increment. Or, for example, this project, they would far instruments. I mean, we originally, when we drew these boundaries, I'll be honest, we drew these boundaries and I believe they went past that hotel.
Yep. Right, basically where the, where the bend, right, over Haveneros.
Sure, right in here, right?
And it took in the triangle as well.
Yeah, so we were all the way over here. And then we were all the way up into there and then up into the triangle and back. I mean, this has pretty much stayed the same. Based on what we originally planned, right? This has, this is not necessary, but it was there. We originally had this. And this is what, where we shaved it back. And then this, this as well got shaved out, you know, or it's trying to reduce it with the, with the argument or the thought that we can always amend the TIF district boundaries when there's a true project developer interested in that triangular piece of property. Then we would amend the TIF boundaries and bring it in. The same thing down in here, as we're trying to clean this area up in here. If there was a project here, we would bring that in at that time. But we could still get to the park if we want, just by getting rid of this line here. I mean, like that. I mean, that's another way to get to the park, bring it in without bringing this in. So that's, that's the exercise that, that Adam and his folks have to work on with us.
I see. I had a hand from Mr. Meatloaf and then Mr. Brian.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. One of the other things to keep in mind is the time limits that we, we deal with with tips, that's twenty three years. And so most of your projects are going to want to see twenty year development agreement or incentive packages. So and we have run into that potential issue with the JC Penney project. We don't have enough time left in the TIF to make it work for what they need for their performance. So we, again, we want to be, if we think we've got something, let's add it, but let's not just add something in case and then it may be ten years. And then we have to go through the whole exercise of either creating a new tip, putting that into that, that tip. Or potentially expanding it, which then has to go to the general assembly and, and that takes a much longer time, hour ago. And you have to get, buy it from all of the taxing bodies, things like that. So it is, as, as, as Adam said, it's, it's a mix of the art and the science.
One question.
Ryan?
Question for Adam, actually. Adam, with your experience with PGAV in, in forming boundaries for tips in Illinois. Aside from the hard boundaries that get created as a part of your redevelopment plan. Have you seen other cities who have identified future additional areas and, and shown them map wise? So whether it's this triangle or beyond the hard boundary going up to East End Park. I mean, have you seen other cities do that in advance or they've just not done it at all, but kept quiet?
I have not seen that sort of map included in when you get on the plan, but there's nothing keeping you from doing that. If that's how you'd like to approach it and just sort of say, well, this is a future expansion area. When a project comes along, we'll go ahead and amend the boundary and do that. So if you feel like you got a good shot at it and if you're going to really pursue a project there. I don't think even if, if it takes a couple of years, I think it'd be worth including it, to be frank.
Just up front, included up front?
Yeah, even if.
As opposed to.
A couple of years. It's really hard to tell what's going to happen in a few years, but if it does, if it is going to happen in a couple of years. You know, you're going to have to come back. Amending a tip to add property is a shockingly similar project and creating a tip to begin with. So it's very cumbersome for moving property. That is the easy tip project, adding property is the hard one.
Okay.
I would say it sounds to me like the, like Alex would need to be consulted, you know, before we made a choice about this because if you look at the lineup of projects that there, she's very diligently working through, right, between JC Penney and Steagle. You know, how many layers can she manage with the staff she has to bring projects into an area? That would tell us, current or there would tell us how much time this might really take and whether we would want to include it now or expand later. But I, Mr. Brian, you have.
I just wanted to, I mean, we can continue to acquire a property. There's nothing stopping us from doing that if, if a property. And I think this is exactly what tips were designed to do. This is definitely a blighted area. We could use, you know, the blighted area that we have down there is absolutely the best use for this. And success breeds success. If they see some new development going on, new streets, new, you know, par gets their flood protection, we get this. You know, say we do manage to do something with that lot, the triangle. I think, you know, that's going to encourage other people to look at the east and right now nobody, you know, you just want to get through there. You didn't, you're not in a big hurry to, to like settle down on the east side of town here right now.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I, I mean, that, that makes a lot of sense to me and especially hearing, you know, with Adam saying, okay, if we left it out of the TIF, but to add it in later is almost as much work as setting up its own tip. Right? So then why leave it out? Unless we were going to only set it up as its own dedicated tip, because I presume if, which then the only advantage there is to say that you know, if we need to get that ramp up, right, to give it more time, but if we included it in the current process and then needed to separate it out later. How much work is that than if we had just left it out and then build its own tip later? Right? I, I imagine it's, the difference is actually pretty minor. And so we would make the risk and say, hey, let's hope we can get all these done. But if the triangle doesn't get developed in five years, someone has a plan, but we need that twenty years, we have to rebuild that tip. Is that a much more complicated process or not?
So it would be to, to take out, so let's say, for example, you put everything in that they want. And then it doesn't happen for five years and then you get a developer coming along, but you need that extra time. That's what you're saying to you. Take the triangle out and put it in as a tip.
Yes, basically.
The other scenario you're allowing, I think that's one, one way to do it. The other scenario you're on, I think that's one one way to do it. Uh the other way to do it would be to extend the life of the TIF. Now, when you're only five years into a TIF, I haven't seen it extended on the back end that early. But it is certainly an option. You can talk to your taxing bodies. And talk to them about supporting that project and always lead with the project, you know, it's kind of a. It it doesn't go very well when you just say, well, we need more money, you know, it it's great to lead with the project. Why are we used to this? Uh it's going to bring new construction jobs, going to bring new residents, stuff like that. If you can convince them. Then there's no reason why you can't extend that TIF for the twelve years on the back end. I also want to note that you can end the TIPS early. Uh and you you can end the parts of TIPS early. So if a few years down the road. Um you need to have a little play with the taxing bodies where you're extending the life of the TIF. If there are other parts of the TIF that have been revamped and the infrastructure projects are done there. You can even close down the TIF on those properties to give that windfall back to the taxing bodies. In order to get that other project. There's a lot of options that you can.
Sorry, there was, can I, well, because he didn't answer a key part of my question, which was the level of difficulty compared to. Setting up a second TIF later or removing it from the TIF to starting it in its own second part. Is that any more complicated with the removal portion?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I'm sorry about that. Um so. And amending a TIF to add property and creating a new TIF, those are both expensive and cumbersome, lots of notices and all that kind of stuff. If you just extend the life of the TIF, that's a much simpler process. Assuming that you can get the letters of support from your taxing body. You you get those letters from them, you send it to your legislator. They pass the bill and you get it for the twelve years.
Sure.
You don't have to pay me to study the properties or anything like that.
Right.
If you want to cut off the triangle and put it in a dumb TIF, that's going to be expensive and time consuming.
Is it how much more expensive and time consuming than building it as its own TIF overall? Or would it be basically the same? Because you said it's easy to take land out of a TIF. So if I need to dump it out of the TIF and then make its own TIF, that's no different than saying in five years, we're just gonna put it in a second TIF. Right, that's the question, just those two.
That's how I view it. Those are the the same thing to me.
Okay.
Uh either mending to include the triangle or creating a new TIF, I think it'll be the same price and the same process.
So if we think we're gonna set up a second TIF there potentially or or. We could say, well, let's try it as part of the same first TIF and hopefully get lucky. Knowing if we've got three or four places we want to hit, we may not hit all of them. Well, let's give ourselves a chance. Let's not only shoot for two and we can shoot for four. And if we get two done, great, we'll go figure out those ones next and that's. Okay, thank you. I I know that's like really down in there, but I want to understand what our paths and options are. Thank you.
What what I'm hearing is that anytime you have to go to the legislature to ask to amend anything, that's going to be a much more time-consuming process. If you're talking about time equaling money. Um, Mr. Moore?
Uh, thank you. So. To talk about the triangle, I think the tip of the triangle, is that not? Within Ben and Beller Parkway, that's a, that's a part of the um. That part of the triangle is the lowest part when you're talking about the flood. I think what we're talking about is a rhombus. Oh, no, that's. Isn't the majority of that, like a lot, a lot of that land is in a higher elevation? Some of it.
In the triangle itself, it's higher than it is on the.
Old River Drive and some of that land is for sale. It's been for sale for a long time. Do we? Do we know why? I mean, does anyone know why it's been for sale for a long time? Is it? The the owner of that property wants way too much money for it, um or is it just that there's no interest? And I think that would drive, I think you you'd want to know the answer to that before you want to include the rhombus and then uh. Let's go three more times. Before you want to add that into. Into the TIF. Because if if. Right, right, because it might be that if you put it in the TIF that you're going to be able to attract the investment, but it's. If there's never going to be interest in.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Mr. Moore. There's two follow-ups. What is the capacity of Renew Moline to get an anchor project in there? You know, in terms of residential and what is the interest or has been the interest or lack of? By in these areas that are already for sale? Those are some follow-up questions it sounds like I'm hearing from the council and the state. Mr. Schmidt?
One thing that was mentioned earlier was we're talking about the area we're gonna be studying to look at, putting into that. Yeah, knowing that we may be talking about multiple TIPS over multiple years. Is there cost savings or reason to study a larger area? Right, even even further down into what may become a second. Thing later, or or is it this would change the estimate so much that we wouldn't want to study that because we'd have to do a new study anyway? I'm sorry, that's probably a harder hypothetical than the last one.
If we um if we go a couple of blocks, we won't change the price on it. I mean, if we go probably. Ten or twelve blocks down to Peterson Park or something like that, we may have to rethink the estimate. But uh no, if if. We can do it for the same price that we lost. Let's just decide what it is at the beginning that we're studying. You know, so that we can make one trip and that that would be the meaning.
But if we were trying to cover like a second zone farther west.
Your future.
For a future TIF, right, knowing that that one's coming up in three to five years or when there's a project to anchor it. Would would the would the development happening in the first TIF? Change the dynamic so much that we'd have to redo it?
If you are going to, if if you're saying study it now and put it in three to five years from now, I would say wait to study it. Um these. And I I don't know the number of months. I believe that there's been a case law on this where. Um those TIF studies and the light studies usually have a light of maybe six to six to eight. Ten, ten months, something like that. So. When we go out there, we take pictures, we document the condition, uh tabulate the conditions and the language. And it really needs to be used within a year for TIF studies. So I would wait if you're if you're thinking about. The future, I would wait to study it till we.
Thank you very much, Mr. Travis. That's very helpful to me. I I had one other question is. Uh how parallel is our work on quiet zones in this area moving?
You want to speak to that, David?
Well, when Mr. Diddy brings up uh you know, an overpass of sorts, right? These are some of the things that happen in quiet zones as well, so I just started to think about what what's all packaged together.
The quiet zone's not moving along very fast. The FRA won't make a decision on. It's grants till this summer. So we're moving forward with the diagnostic review with the railroad and the. The BNSF and the ICC and our consultant uh this March. But uh we're still waiting for the FRA. To proceed with that and our our quiet zone goes all the way to the East Moline. Uh city limits, so those crossings would be part of that study and and quieted ultimately.
Okay, but it doesn't pre- preclude us from moving ahead with this. Okay, great. Thank you. Anything further from the council? That's Mr. Moore.
Thank you. So if. I want to move away from the. Are we talking a little bit? Over to, over to um. Um this.
Twenty-third Street?
Not quite, um Midland Davis, okay? Right, so the Midland Davis, isn't that not part of TIF thirteen?
No, it's not inside the TIF.
It's not inside the TIF.
Double check.
Double check, so maybe it was included. The border uh where you say the park as well. So um. I I they 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 talk, they they want to talk to the city. They're they're interested.
The meeting is all set up on that. They requested it.
Okay, good. And so I know there's probably a lot of remediation and there's a lot to. A lot of work to do.
That would require, that property would require because of its industrial nature, phase one and phase two.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to do both. Then there would have to be. Depending on what is is found below ground and what what is the property we use for, you'd get into remediation questions. So funding sources for remediation.
TIF thirteen only goes as far east as twenty-first Street.
So what's this, what's the university TIF?
Yeah, let's see, that one is Riverbend Commons. That one goes to. That one does include Midland Davis, so that's TIF twelve.
What year is that expired?
Uh TIF twelve went into effect in twenty thirteen, so twenty-three years would make it, yeah, we're about halfway through it.
I'm gonna remind the council, we're not supposed to be having conversations while all the people are talking, and especially when you're online, they can't hear. What uh the teachers who have the floor are saying. Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, you have a question?
I guess uh. We're gonna talk about the ninety-two corridor study. Is that? I don't know where we're at now. Are we here on Moline? We have moved to Moline downtown, I know that. But we're gonna talk about the actual. Instructor on L nine two at some point.
Yeah.
Now, I have a few questions for David. I I guess I'll.
I didn't. I bring them up now, I mean.
So I heard you say Roundabout?
Yes.
And that's at the border of Moline, East Moline?
Literally at the border, correct.
Okay, I know that that street is in horrible, horrific condition. Now, uh I don't know where it came out of the pavement city. But I know it's gotta be up there as one of the more street. I don't have, it's not a very long street. No, yeah, I don't have a PC where I can get an exact but number. I mean, I guess my question would be when the Roundabout goes in and I'm not saying it's going tomorrow. The state has hired your consulting firms. Ciorba Group that are out of Chicago, they're just starting kind of their preliminary engineering, let's say, it's of. One segment of ninety-two and eastern portions of the city Moline. And then a lion's share of the work is through East Moline. Uh and if you look at some of those, some technical attachments that we sent. Uh with the council agenda that shows some of those shaded areas that they're looking. They're just starting to look at the cross section and the right-of-way impacts and whether they can fit in. A three-lane section with bikes or three lanes without bikes or four lanes. Uh they're kind of going through the process of. In winnowing uh what that. Design should look like. They're the ones who proposed. That the city should move its bike facilities to Fifth Avenue. We're kind of, we're warm on that. I mean, Fifth is a good place. Uh quieter street to bicycle, though we don't have much room there. And then and then we said to the state that we would expect the state to. Take the lead on designing a building. And if they have easement there, right, they can expand. I'm not sure. They have to to check. I don't worry if anything on Fifth Avenue. I mean, that would help if a new business is coming in, they want to know if they're gonna lose like four foot of the. Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Vita, I think it's it's my impression that you wanted to just open this up on any of these reports, open up, have an open discussion, so.
Yep.
I thank you. I just wanted to, were you talking about the study of the actual? Fourth or Fifth Avenue? Fourth Avenue itself or Fifth Avenue?
The corridor itself.
Because that, we won't have PCI on that.
That on the state, not on ninety-two, but we would, we would color it red.
The piece. He he was meant to piece along the party's front is by paddleman.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Which is in pretty poor shape.
Right, it is.
And that's in the city.
So, thank you, Your Honor. Uh you created some. Extra boundaries over here and if we could jump to this. Uh twenty-third Street area. Um it's my impression that 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 rental place isn't going. The equipment rental. And 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 that's within this this.
Correct.
And so, I I mean, I think on the east side. Where the uh the Parkside Bar and Grill and there's a lot of old, like historically commercial. Buildings, there's a lot of opportunity there. I don't know if if you put it in thought of what you envision of. The uh the west side of that area that is included in this box and if if anything.
I think that's part of the master planning process. I think even when ULI was here, I mean, they had suggestions for that area. And those will be taken into consideration by whomever is brought on board. A world-class uh consortium of professionals. Um but that area in itself, I think, was part of that plan originally. Uh I didn't go so far as into the neighborhoods, I mean, you know, that's for obvious reasons. But that's that's a potential TIF area. And maybe a TIF all on its own. But again, that's to be determined based upon plans, I think, that come back from from this master planning process. Because you can't do it all at once. Area is just too large. I mean, it's like twenty acres or more of land from the river all the way going up to Seventh Street. So we'd have to define what we're going to do and I don't think we're gonna create another TIF one. I I don't, I don't think that's what I'm hearing would work either. So, that being said, that one area is just one possibility. Of course, the area where. Midland Davis is at is already in the TIF, right? So in fact, I kind of drew it in. It's close. I think I'm pretty close, maybe not exactly. You know, that that's an existing TIF that's happily through its life. Well, there's certainly opportunity there for renewed development along the. Along the roadway between the railroad tracks. The university might have some interest in partnering. Uh along that corridor to put in housing, student housing. Uh so a lot of opportunities that that, you know, are somewhat talked about but not always fully vetted. So that's one of the reasons why we're looking at that particular area as well. You could see the black hash lines kind of obliterate the road through the park. You know, based on the L ninety-two corridor study I did several years ago. Uh if we ever get to that point, that would that would disappear. So. A lot of opportunity in it. Who doesn't want to live across from a park? Especially a park like that. Prime, it's prime, prime real estate. Through that, that park is, you know, that's the best park in the entire system outside of Green Valley, right?
That better mark is the crown jewel alone.
Are there any other questions about this topic and number eight? For our roundtables?
Just as you're as you're studying all of this, right, I assume you're. You're a long way from knowing what the possibilities are for McKinley School, whether we need to tear it down or. Et cetera, but all that's gonna have to be included in the. This will come back probably in a few months. But uh that'll all be included in whether we expand the boundaries or if there's opportunities there.
McKinley is a bit difficult. It's pretty far off of L nine ninety-two. We originally looked at, can we really include it in? You'd have to wrap in a lot of residential in into that to get to McKinley School. Again, that's not to say you couldn't create it here on TIF when you kick the school, but.
TIP may or may not even be the answer for now, right? So.
Yeah, and 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 we're working uh with potential, potential developer. Uh we're not sure how. Serious the developer is, but um we're continuing to work through that process.
Very cool.
We're in the process of cleaning that building. Obviously, the council awarded a contract for that. As well as cleaning the manual arts building and there's even an interest there. A very live, active interest in doing something. So, you know. Maybe we'll finally, after all these decades, be able to get those buildings back into some meaningful use. McKinley School property is a six-acre site use. I mean, that in itself could could be a mini TIF. Right, because it had minimum sizes an acre.
I would beg you to keep the neighborhood in mind. You want to have something that fits into that neighborhood. And I don't know who you're talking to for a developer. I'd like to be included in that at least. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Waldron?
Uh this is in the border, so it relates. Did we ever purchase the Windmill property?
We we made an offer to that property and they changed their mind. They decided to keep it.
Thank you. Also, I would say that uh we had gotten some direction from council to do an environmental. Analysis of it. We asked the property owner, the property owner was not interested in, so that kind of ended the stuffs.
That's pretty much what changed.
Thank you. Anything further? Well, there, seeing as this is a continual process, keep, uh, you know, if you have questions, please reach out to Bob and Brian to, uh, get those questions answered, and then, um, we'll bring it up as necessary, even if it's full council. There's nothing further, we'll move to miscellaneous business. Um, I have a couple things. One, I'm very proud to say that our initiative with the school district on internship for students has expanded, um, based on some conversation I had, um, during my summertime rounds, um, with, in the building, um, we approached, uh, the district and the, and HR to work on an administrative assistant internship, and so they, uh, were able to model that after the public work, after the public works internship, and shared that information with the school board yesterday, so that will be coming, um, it's just exciting that there's more and more opportunities to show students what's available in their local environment in their careers, et cetera, and I'm thankful that staff was going to share that idea, and, um, and hopefully it will be helpful for them and a good experience being a mentor. And secondly, um, this Thursday, we have, uh, Bob and myself and the folks from LRS are hosting our regional, um, partners in another meeting, um, to go over details related to the LRS agreement. There was a good meeting, two good meetings, uh, two Wednesdays ago, I believe it was, maybe this one Wednesday ago, um, at the airport, um, and that answered a lot of questions. Um, but I, I did wanna also share that, um, because these processes, processes for citing, um, these types of places are fraught with competition in the industry, um, we might be seeing some, um, actors that we're not sure what they're associated, or whom they're associated with, and, um, that is the case in the case over the weekend with someone canvassing a neighborhood in Moline, um, with a petition against the LRS, um, agreement. And so, uh, all we have to do is look toward what has happened in West Chicago to sort of get some understanding about the, uh, big, uh, the big players, um, in the industry, the big publicly traded players who, um, are against competition, so, um, I just wanted to make sure you knew that was there, and, uh, that that had happened, and that Tori and Bob and I are working to continually share information with the public about the process of moving forward, and, um, looking forward to that meeting on, on Thursday. That's all I have, Mr. Moore.
Oh, he's just taking.
Anything for miscellaneous?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Mercedes?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Timmy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Moore? Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing, Your Honor, I thought maybe.
Mr. Waldron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, anyone from staff?
I think we're gonna pass, it's Valentine's Day, happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there, wait, is there any public comments?
Should we adjourn?
And there's no effective session, uh, who cut that motion to adjourn?
Moore, second.
Seconded by O'Brien, uh, Ross.
Williams.
I don't, sorry.
Other person, Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Mathias?
Aye.
Timmy?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Got an A's on A's, we're moving past.
Do the man, Eric.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, thank you.